I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. We're going to start out with the open public forum. What we do is anybody that would like to speak about something, we give you a couple of minutes to do that. And tonight, we have our representative Glenn Grunhagen here. You'd like to say a few words?
Sure. Thanks for inviting me. And thanks for serving on the city council. I was on the Glencoe Civil Lake School Board for 16 years. And I know it's not always an easy job representing the public. And hopefully at the state level, we help you and not hurt you, okay? With some mandates and requirements. I handed out a kind of a legislative biennium report that I sent out just recently. Some of you may have seen it already. Is there a particular area that anybody wants me to touch on? Otherwise, I'll just kind of give a general overview of the last biennium.
Go ahead with Jenny.
Okay. One of the -- I know this last session was a little frustrating down there. We did pass two things. One was a bonding bill with quite a bit of PFA money in it, which is good for rural cities who are upgrading their water systems or sewer system, wastewater plants or sewer systems. But in the last two years, actually quite a bit was accomplished. Oh, the other thing we did this last session that the governor did sign was pension reform bill. We had tried to pass that on a bipartisan basis for the last several years. And the governor did sign it now. So that, I don't know if many of you follow our four public pension plans, but they're projected at about, and again, it differs based on life expectancy and projected return, but they're somewhere between 16 and $30 billion short. I've seen analysis on that statewide. This should help some. We're in better shape than many states, okay? Especially like California or New York or some of those. So, so those two things did pass this last session. One of the things that concerns, I think, all of us is healthcare reform. The good news is, we passed some reforms, not this session, but the previous session and also the session before that. And the four carriers have announced for 2019, a decrease in small group health insurance and also individual health insurance. And I did say the word decrease, okay? Between three and 12 percent. Now, there's a lot more work that needs to be done on healthcare, but obviously, the double-digit 20, 30, 40 percent increases, we've at least seemed to break that cycle for the time being. One of the things that will be an issue on healthcare in the upcoming election is this idea of expanding Minnesota Care or government-run healthcare. I'm a strong opponent of that. And the reason is, if you, in fact, I just visited with the Glencoe Hospital Administrator today, and most of your rural area hospitals are getting 50 to 60 percent of their patients are on government healthcare. And what people need to understand is, healthcare systems lose money on the reimbursement of government healthcare. Like Medicare, they're, I belong to a committee of doctors down in the cities, and I've sold health insurance since 1978. But they get about somewhere between 25 and 35 percent reimbursement of what their costs are. So in the past, they've been cost shifting to the private sector, but that doesn't work anymore now under Obamacare. So what you'll see if we go statewide with a single payer plan, you'll see rural hospitals hurt and in some cases, closing, and you'll have less access to healthcare, is my perspective, okay? And Rochester Mail Clinic CEO, just a year ago on the Minneapolis Tribune, and I cut the article out and kept it, said that the mail was going to lean towards private health insurance patients. He was heavily criticized for saying that versus government reimbursement. But the reason he says that is because, you know, they lose money on government reimbursement. So what we all have to understand is, we need to reinvigorate the private healthcare system if we want to see a strong healthcare system maintained in the rural communities, which is a high priority for me. So more work needs to be done. This is an area that I specialize in. I've sold health insurance since 1978. I own an independent insurance agency in Glencoe. And I certainly want to maintain strong healthcare access for rural Minnesota. We did pass a substantial transportation bill, both in bonding this year and in the previous year. Over the next 10 years, it totals about $6.5 billion. The good news is that we have prioritized, in the House and the Senate, treating communities with populations under 5,000 equally to population, to cities with populations over 5,000. That's good news for many of the small cities in our district. I think the previous, or the previous, or this last session, we put $8 million towards it. The session before, when we passed the major transportation bill, we put another 12 million. So we want to continue that. Many of us would like to see a guaranteed funding stream for rural Minnesota and the smaller communities. The larger communities still get their funding. As far as 212, would you like a quick update on 212?
Real quick, if you can.
Okay. Yeah, I've been working on this the last several years. I've been the chief author and trying to finish that. Right now, we have MINDOT committed with, we need $46 million to finish the section between Chaska and Cologne. Right now, we have 28 million of state funding committed, 6 million from Carver County. And if Congressman Tom Emmer and Paulson will get us another 12 million, after 50-some years, we can turn that section of 212 into four lanes, okay? So we're real close, and that would help our area. With that, I'll close my comments. I also am on the Legislative Water Commission, if you'd like any type of update on that. If anyone has a specific question for me, I'm more than happy to respond to it. I must have done a good job, no?
Good.
Hey, thank you and thanks for inviting me tonight.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience that would be here for the open public forum? Like to speak? If not, we'll move on. Approval of the agenda. Don, is there anything you'd like to add?
No, sir.
Lyle?
No.
Pete?
Yeah, oil deposit.
I don't know if we bring this up here now, that dispute with Barb's lot line up there?
No, I haven't gotten anything back.
Yeah.
That's kind of between them.
Yeah, just oil deposit.
Correct, correct, Don? Okay.
Based on what I know, which is very little of what's going on.
Me too.
Julie?
Nothing.
Dale?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Bob?
Nope.
Jenny, is there anything to add?
No.
All right, then I'll entertain a moment, a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Dale, seconded by Julie. Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda, has everybody had time to look everything over? Claims of the month, alumni benches, sewer jetter agreements, construction project. Are there any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion made by Lyle.
Second.
Seconded by Bob. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have no public hearings. New business, we have Walton Law Group here to, this is the new attorney.
The city sent out RFPs for attorneys. We received six of them back. Aaron was the only one that voted to do both the criminal and the civil. And he is also working, negotiating directly with Gaylord to be their city attorney. And I'll let you talk about the rest.
Gaylord I'm approved for.
Okay.
It's just a matter of when we're going to take over from Don, so hopefully by December 1st. Yeah, if all goes well, so.
Right.
You should have received a response to your request for proposal in the packet. I saw that in there. I don't know if you have any questions about that, or...
Well, how many towns roughly do you do?
Well, prior to Gaylord, it was 10 cities, seven in Renville County, Bellevue, Raymond. I don't do, the ones in Renville County, I do both the criminal and civil. I have an associate who helps with a lot of the prosecutions. I usually do most of the civil side of things. But we do both, we help each other out, so. I have good help and I like doing city work, and I would like the opportunity to work for you guys, too.
Talked to a couple of people about you, and they had nothing but good things to say, so.
Thank you.
Very good. So I will entertain a mo, is there any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and hire.
I hope that we proceed with hiring Walton Law Group.
Second.
Motion made by Julie, seconded by Dale. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Just to throw this in here, and you would be coming in at the same retainer amount that...
Correct.
This first year, to see how things go, so.
Yep, and I, yeah. See where things are at, otherwise it would be just arbitrary of me to pick some other number.
Appreciate that.
Need to see where things are at.
Yes, we do.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thanks, Aaron.
Thank you.
See you soon.
And he's going to work with Don as well as Gaylord to transition in, and so I'm kind of letting those guys work that out with them, so.
They kind of know what they're doing.
I know, more than I do.
That sounds good. The next new business, we have county road 57 discussion. What we did is, a couple of weeks ago, we had the county engineer, and myself, and Gordy, and Oscar, Jenny, and Troy. We're out there, and we looked over to see what options there were for county road 57. So, Mr. Becker?
Yes?
You want to just come on up here and ask, answer any questions that the council may have?
Sure.
Go easy on him.
And you've got a list of the...
In your packet was the items that we discussed at the last, at the meeting out there.
So let's just start at the basics. If the city chose to do nothing, the county would go in and just overlay it, mill it, then overlay it without increasing any of the width or anything like that, correct?
Correct. What we would look at was, we would look at increasing the pavement strength by milling it, or doing a full-depth reclamation where we grind up that existing pavement, add maybe like some cement to that or some additional asphalt, then put new bituminous over the top. We might have to widen out the shoulders a foot to do that. We wouldn't do any other changes. That would be one option.
That's in your current easement, right?
Right. Everything would be inside the existing easement, the way it is out there.
I think probably the next option we had talked about was, if we did widen or put shoulders on, we had looked at four foot and six foot.
Right.
The difference is there. And one of the options were, if we reduce the height by, what was it, about nine inches?
If we reduce the height, I'd say about six inches. We'd be able to do that probably. We'd still have to acquire some right-ofway on the outside. It wouldn't be nearly as much. It would probably be in the range of about 12 feet. We'd take our existing road right-ofway, which is 33 feet, and expand it probably out to about 45 feet for the properties on the west side of the road. The east side of the road, we probably would need a little bit larger right-ofway, but that's all farm field right now.
And the four and six, we had talked about both of those. And of course, if we went six, it would take a little more land on each side.
Little bit more.
But if I remember right, you felt that the four or six-foot wide shoulder, the city would still have to replace or move our electrical.
With both those options, I feel we would have to move the electrical, yes.
Gordy, did you?
I come up with a number of $58,000 to $65,000, but that could be a labor piece group. That could be higher in three years to 105.
Yeah.
I'm guessing on $58,000.
If we go six to 12 feet west, how far are you talking about going east?
Um, there we would actually, my plan would be to build the ditch a little bit deeper so we can fix some of the drainage issues that are located on the west side of the road. We would drain the west side over to the east side, and then drain that to the north, and then develop a little pond north of town somewhere.
But how far, how far are you talking going east? I mean, how much easement would you need to get to the east?
Um...
We have water lines on that side, I'm just curious, would we be touching that?
I don't think so at this point in time. I think the water lines only go out to 8th Street, or do they go all the way up to the north?
No, they go across 8th Street.
Okay. They do cross 8th, or they don't?
They cross 8th Street and go back to the south.
Go back into town, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. So south of 8th, we got a water line issue on the east side, which we don't have.
There, the ditch probably wouldn't get a lot deeper, so I don't think that that would be an issue at this point in time, so.
Because like, so the shut-offs are on that side, and that's why, that was my concern, so.
Water main definitely has some concern, because you like to maintain a depth of, ideally, six and a half to seven feet as a minimal, otherwise they start to freeze periodically, so.
Didn't we talk about having to move some of the water shut-off, so?
All the shut-offs are currently down in front of the hydrant.
Okay.
They are, okay.
All right.
By Delaware General and Justin Phillips. There's a hydrant there.
Yeah, on that, by the fence.
The shut-offs are in that corner.
So realistically, if they did go with a four-foot shoulder, the county gets a county state aid highway, I mean, so they could get the funding for that.
The board can love to do that, yep.
And as far as a property owner, and I'm not trying to pick on anybody, but I'm looking, we were buying Gary's house over there, Gary Knight, and how much of a footprint would that make on his property? I mean, we were, seemed to think that it really wasn't going to take a lot more than what he had there.
Well, realistically, you know, when we're adding the four-foot or the six-foot shoulder, everything on the outside of that's going to remain grass. So it's not going to look any different hardly. Today, you have the 12-foot lane, and you have the grass after that. So really, it's going to look like it's about four feet to six feet different. Now, the right-ofway line will allow us to do a little bit more construction outside there. That's for sloping the end slopes and blending it in with the lawns and everything and making it look nice. So really, is that going to be a big difference to the property owner? I would not think so. The county would still have an easement over that area. Today, we have an easement of 33 feet. We would look to expand that easement probably to 45 feet, so that would be that 12 feet on the west side of the road.
Okay. The last option, I believe, was if we put in curb and gutter.
Correct.
Which would lower the road...
Significantly.
Significantly. And everybody would have curb and gutter, you would eliminate the ditches, pretty much.
Pretty much, and we'd end up having to build a fairly long storm sewer system. Again, we'd probably look at draining it to the north end of town, building a pond up there. That would require that the county does a significant subcut, because right now, the road is about three and a half feet above grade. We would have to take out two feet below the existing ground out there, so we'd be cutting out about five or six feet pretty easily for the entire stretch, the half-mile there. So that would be a very expensive cost for the county.
That would make it harder to plow, wouldn't it? Wouldn't it kind of catch snow then, too?
Um, well, urban sections, the curb and gutter does catch snow. There's always some northwest wind, and that's the one that we always worry about the most. There are lots of houses on that side, so maybe it wouldn't be quite as much of an issue. But the east, anytime there's an east wind, it would catch, so.
And I think the cost was considerable for the city, wasn't it, like 300 and some odd thousand?
Correct. There would be additional costs to the city at that point in time because of the storm sewer system, so.
How much, Mr. Mayor?
It's like 330,000.
330,000.
And we wanted to have options. That's, that's one reason we wanted to look at that option also. Are there questions from the council? I guess my feeling is, we've talked about this considerably. We've, we've hoped that the people out there have contacted us and have talked to the council. And I think we need to make a decision on it, so that the county can go ahead and start their planning. And I'm hoping that next month, the council will be ready to make a decision on this. So are there questions that council has concerning any of this?
You know, I know...
I've talked to everybody along the street there, and nobody likes it.
What do you say to them?
They don't want the racetrack in there.
Julie?
One of the things that people have asked me about, excuse me, is, you know, they, they see the little stakes with the paint sticking up, and they think, well, the road's going to be that wide. And I've said, no, I'm, those are the marks, marking the edge of the easement.
The right-ofway, mhm.
So the actual road, say we were to go ahead with six-foot shoulders...
Would be four-foot or six-foot wider, then that's it.
Would be, yeah, would just be that much wider than the existing road. So the existing paved surface wouldn't even be much wider than it is now.
Well, we would pave that four-foot or that six-foot. So it would be, right now, the existing pavement is 12 feet on the one lane, so it would be either 16 feet, or it'd be 18 if we wanted the six-foot, so.
On each side.
Yep.
So four feet would be two feet on each side, or?
No, four, we're just talking four feet on each side, so.
So if we...
Usually, we talk one side of the road, so.
Guys, go ahead, and I'll wait.
Nope. Did somebody have a question over there?
So we have to, to allow you to finish paving 57, you need county state aid money to do that, correct?
Um, not for the in-town portion. The in-town portion, we were kind of looking at options. To the north, the board would probably look at using county state aid dollars to pave that portion, yes.
So if we agree to make it a county state aid Iowa, a county and state aid highway with a four-foot shoulder, and the state come back, comes back and says they're not going to fund it at that standard, do we have any recourse, or are we stuck with it?
Well, I don't think that that would be an issue, because that is meeting the minimum design standard for...
Because that, that's my concern, is that we agree to do this, and then, and then we're stuck with it, and now the state comes back and says they want 14s and 8s. That's, a lot of the concern I'm hearing, is nobody's buying it because the numbers keep changing.
14 and...
14 width and then six or eight-foot shoulders.
Oh, okay.
And numbers have changed several times on the dimensions on this road, and nobody really is buying it at this point.
Well, Dale, the minimum shoulder standard we would need would be that four-foot.
That four, yep.
Ideally, we would build something larger than that.
Right.
Most of the other towns have either a six-foot or an eight-foot shoulder on them. So my initial recommendation to the city was to go with that six-foot. However, there has been lots of controversy with this, and we can't go smaller than four-foot to meet the state aid standard, so.
I have two comments I want to make.
Thank you, Mr. Becker.
One is, on the east side of 57, if you start looking at our comprehensive plan that we're looking at, that could possibly be housing, a new addition in the, you know, five years, 25 years, I don't know when. But do we look at widening the road and preparing for something like that? That could happen. The other, I guess the other concern I would have is, if the county would go ahead and pave that road without us widening the shoulders, I'd be really concerned about the semi-traffic coming in without any shoulders.
That's a good point.
And, and I don't know if the county would pave it without us.
It's hard to know what the commissioners will decide for that. It will cost approximately 1.8 billion to pave the north portion. So if that remains a county road, it'll be county-funded, so.
And that would be one of my, my biggest concerns, if all of a sudden they decide, yeah, we're going to, we're going to pave it anyhow, and we decide not to widen ours. I mean, just standing out there that day, you had to get off the road, trucks, cars.
Correct. Paving the north section will bring more traffic, so.
So I just want to throw those comments in there for the council to think about, too. Any other questions? Now's your chance. Got Tim up here.
So what, refresh my memory, what's the timeline that the county is looking at?
Right now, the county, right now, I have it planned for 2021 to build it. So that means we probably want to have the plans ready by 2020, fall of 2020. So we would start to look at purchasing the additional right-ofway if we go that route, probably by the end of next year, we'd start that process already. So next year, we'd start with the design. The following year, we'd probably start with the right-ofway purchase, and then the following year, we'd probably build it. So it is a fairly long process for us to develop these plans, so.
Okay. Any other questions? It's not your last chance, of course. If you think of something, call Jenny and call Tim. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you for inviting me to discuss it.
All right. Okay, Brown Street Storm Drainage. Would you like to come up here? Or if you feel more comfortable there, too, it's fine. Whatever works for you.
I'm just fine here, I guess.
Okay, let's, let's start it with that.
Was it two months ago, three months ago, the street committee met and discussed working to, something out with Mr. Henderson to help him out, out there, because after the residents out there were proposed with putting in a new street with storm sewer, they weren't really in favor of it. And the street committee, I think, agreed to some black dirt if we had it. And I'm not, and I'm not real sure, were you supposed to get it, or if we were supposed to deliver it, or what the, what that all entailed. But now, he's looking for some black dirt, and he's also looking for some relief on his electric utility bill. So I thought it would be good for Mr. Henderson to come to talk to the council and have a final decision on what we are or are not willing to do in this situation, so.
Who's the street committee?
Lyle and...
Lyle, Bob.
So you want to fill that in, is basically?
That's what you're looking to do, fill it in.
Yes. I've found out that it's about eight inches in the deepest spot. You know, it's not eight inches, the hole, it's about a 30 by 50 area. I do have some black dirt, or fill. It's not going to get me too far. But I have been working with it a little bit to try and, you know, if it rains real hard, I actually have to take the road all the way to my garage because of my air floods, but, um, yeah. I guess one of the things I emailed Jenny, Jenny on was a little bit of a relief. I was looking for a little bit more information on the electric uses on, you know, averages and in-town.
Yeah, and I have a higher chance to get that together.
Okay, yeah, no, that's, that's fine.
And I apologize for that.
I mean, I've had bills that are $300, $400 or something, and I think that's pretty crazy.
Does the sump pump run every time?
Well, yeah, I mean, sump pump runs every five minutes or so for days on end or weeks on end. It's, that's really cranking. As far as, you know, what that usage is, I guess I have a little bit of an idea, but that's where I was hoping to get a little more, you know, information.
As far as sump pumps go, I know that there are a lot of sump pumps in town. There's some areas on the north side where it's quite low, and the sumps are running constantly, too. A lot of them have backup sumps, to give you an idea of how bad it can be. So I don't know how the council feels about that.
Relief on, I mean, as far as relief. You're... I'm for trying to help him fill and bring in dirt and that, but I'm not in favor of relief, I guess, on the utility. I just think if we can get that up, probably that should help, you know? Otherwise, we put in a street, and we've offered to do that, and...
The reason I brought that up is because when you go out there during a storm, you can see that the road drains into my property. I've, I've watched it a number of times.
Well, maybe we need to build a road, then. Well, I can't see just helping one person. If it meets, the road has to be improved, then I'm for doing that. No, we build a road. Then we build a road. And that takes care of the problem.
What are you exactly asking for?
As far as a dollar amount? I, that's why I'd like more information on.
I, he asked me to get him some average usage, and I have to get that from Matthew yet for like the whole town.
It would be difficult.
Yeah, and you, I, just because your bill is higher or lower than the average doesn't mean that it's a sump pump. I, I guess in my eyes, you know, but, but I can certainly get you that information.
If you fill that in, then where does the water go?
Well.
There, there is a culvert that crosses Brown Street. It actually comes into the property, um, right by Sibley State's and the nursing home in between us. And, and we get water sitting there. Um, this year, we've had some water sitting there. It's been dry now for the last month, but that's where it goes. Goes through that culvert and then drains onto ours. Um, now, we have the water sitting there, but, you know, it's.
I mean, does it eventually get to the, to the street?
It can. Takes a lot of water to get it down to the, uh, outlet there, but. And it's not an issue for us because we just don't use that area. We mow it and we don't mow it when it's wet. Going back to the fill, do we have, I don't know if we have black dirt, but what about the fill?
We got fill. He could have any kind of fill he wants, you know, but we don't have black dirt.
And I did tell him about the fill, so, but yeah, we don't have any black dirt right now.
Um, as far as hauling the fill, is that something? How does the council feel about that? Maybe we have access to it, but.
Well, I don't know when there's construction. They have to dump it somewhere.
Uh, what I'm asking is, should the city be hauling the fill to his property and dumping it? Or should, is that, if we're allowing him to have the fill and?
I, I would consider that allowing to have the fill for nothing would be.
Otherwise, other people are gonna say haul sump to mine.
Then you gotta grade it, too, or push it.
I mean, the simplest solution is, like what Mr. Muth says, is, you know, you're, you're in city, we are required to provide you with water and sewer. There probably should be a road and sewer system out there.
And, and we're being charged for it.
I'm not disagreeing with you, Mr. Henderson. I, I agree wholeheartedly. You are paying for a service that the city is required to provide. And I would have to agree with Mr. Muth that the best solution is probably to put a street in there.
Which is gonna cost everybody a whole lot of money.
Yeah, nobody's real excited.
Yeah, there was no, uh, no excitement over that one at all. So we want some clarification for you, too. What's that?
There's ups and downs to whether you want a street or not.
Right.
The street needs, I don't want the street, so we don't fix it. We don't repair it. We just let, you know.
We're, we're currently talking about another street issue, same situation, you know?
Nobody wants to pay, but sometimes we need a street, we need a street.
So for Mr. Henderson, what if the city would give you access to fill?
Yeah, I mean, uh, I'd have to find a way to, um, get it loaded and brought over and all that. Um, how much fill is available?
I, there's about 300 yards there right now.
You can put a nice sledding hill in with 300 yards, you know?
And that is my understanding that we have given fill to other residents for other things, so that doesn't set a precedence, which is a concern. So the way I understand it is unless we go with a new street, we are making the fill available to you. And as far as the extra on the utilities, I think that's, it's a slippery slope and.
I mean, I feel bad for you because it's no fun to pay an electric bill, but I know a lot of people who have some pumps that run very regularly.
Oh, yeah, my neighbor spits all the time.
I mean, right now, I guess, the reason why I said that is because, I mean, it is, it's draining from my neighbors onto me and it's that way because of how the road is and.
Well, what'd they say?
Well, I guess you fill the hole in to see what happens, but then you're probably gonna have to put a street in anyway.
I, I guess I'm in favor of starting with something a little less costly and saying, try the fill, see if that alleviates some of that problem. I don't know about the, well, the sump, you know, the sump's gonna be running no matter what. It's a low area, but before we jump into putting in a street, I'd rather try something different. Uh, you know, a little more cost-effective and. That's my opinion. Council?
Yeah, we can start there.
Just, it's a matter of time for me to, uh, get that done as well as repair from storm damage and stuff like that. That's, that's my current dilemma.
We do rent our trucks and so on, if need be?
Yeah, 90 per hour.
90 per hour? Okay. Is there any more questions you have?
No, I guess not.
I wish we could give you everything. I wish we could give everybody everything, unfortunately.
I'm not saying it's the best situation and, uh, it's just, uh, not a good situation. I don't know what the answers are.
Let's start with that, and if we still have big problems, maybe the next step is looking at a street. Okay. Thank you. Resolution to join statewide volunteer firefighter retirement. Is there anybody from the fire, oh, go ahead.
Why, yes, there is.
Good evening, council. We, um, just brought this up to Jenny about, um, basically joining para through the volunteer fire department. Without, do you guys have any questions on?
What do we have now?
Oh, just, maybe I'll give you a couple, just a couple bullet points of context. We administer our own relief or retirement association for our department at present. And the reason we have voted as an association to request the conversion to para is because essentially that'll put the organization on, on auto-pilot with the state. I mean, essentially, they'll run it, maintain it, invest our money, take care of those activities for us. Our current program requires us to participate with a lot of oversight with the state auditor's office, and it's very expensive for us to do that. But that's a requi- a requirement of the type of program that we are running now. This would eliminate that. We also feel this would be a pretty significant recruitment and retention tool for us. As our current organization doesn't really start awarding any meaningful dollars to its members until they've been on the department quite a long time. Uh, and as we continue to, you know, face this issue of recruitment and retention, we, we think this might help stave off some of the issues that some of our neighboring small departments have had. And one of the areas of concern that we explored, and it's kind of relevant to what Representative Grunhagen said before, the, that para has faced some challenges in meeting some of their commitments in the past. Uh, however, volunteer relief associations, their, their money is kept separate in perpetuity. It will never be commingled with other para funds of other areas of, of, uh, of retirement funding. That's protected by state statute and by federal IRS statute, so our money will be safe. That's, that's the rationale for wanting to do what we're requesting.
So you're gonna take your current investments and put it in para, correct? Cost after that, does it just remain the same to the city? Does it increase or what?
That depends. Um, we, it depends on what our benefit level is. Because our, our, the benefit level that, that we would propose or that would be approved would be evaluated on a rolling basis to see how investments are doing, et cetera, et cetera, to determine what the contribution of the sponsoring entity, also known in this case as the City of Winthrop, would have to participate at, or would have to contribute. We are suggesting a level of benefit to our members that, under normal circumstances, and I realize normal is a bit of a quasi-term, but under normal circumstances would create less of an obligation to the city than what they are currently obligated to now. Uh, so that if we experience any lean investment times, um, you know, the averages would work out to be about the same or hopefully even in favor of the city in terms of their overall contributions. This would, this is not part of our request, but, you know, just as an observer of, of how the city does things in certain areas where they have reserve funds, um, to prepare for expenditures, you know, i- in theory, if what we're proposing is adopted and there is a, a savings realized, um, that savings could be held in a reserve fund, uh, to really, you know, kind of level that, uh, you know, expenditure in, perhaps in perpetuity.
Well, this is, this is run by the state.
Correct.
How do we know what our costs are? I mean, you're saying?
When you say costs.
When you move, when you move your money or what, you say it's gonna be less or more, I don't know, either way. What is the?
Are you referring to like?
Contribution of the city to, towards the fund, to your para. What's the para?
Well, current, currently, the city has made a commitment to the department to contribute $1,000 per year, per active member. Um, under the proposed para plan with a $2,500 per year per firefighter contribution, the city's contribution would be approximately $19,000 per year using current figures.
And right now, it's 24 based on the $1,000 per firefighter.
So how are we acting?
Pardon?
What'd you say?
About $5,000, yeah.
Yeah, yep, right now it's 24,000 and we're looking at 19,000 here.
But we are also allowed up to 30 firefighters on our roster.
Without an increase to the contribution.
Well, no, I'm just saying because that's, that's, yeah, that's gonna be a different, you know, right now, we're at 20, 24 guys. That's where. We could go to 30 is what, uh, we're allowed. So that would change your, your numbers a little bit, too.
You're all right. Trust the state, go ahead.
Why, uh, why do you guys want to do this? I mean, what's the benefit to you?
Well, as we said, it puts, basically puts the program on autopilot. Uh, we avoid a lot of costs. We don't, we're not paying for audits and oversight. Uh, it's a retention and recruitment tool and more to your point, as I elaborated just slightly to before, your, your concerns were echoed to, to a large degree by myself as well, and that's why we invested a lot of time. We've had meetings, you know, face-to-face with, with para people. And what's different about relief associations, excuse me, volunteer relief associations, is that our money is safe. It is our money. It cannot be commingled. It is protected by state statute and is protected by IRS statute. Our money cannot be used to fund a full-time department in Minneapolis. It cannot be used to fund a police department in Duluth, Minnesota. It can't be, and it's, you know, protected at both of those levels.
Winthrop's money is set aside for Winthrop. It's, and Fairfax is under Fairfax's money is.
That's a, you know, it's an excellent point and I.
Oh, no, you know, uh, we have PERA, Gordy and those guys, they're in PERA, and those things always change on them. I mean, uh, they say the fund is short, and so guess what, you know, uh, we're gonna take a little more this year because, uh, you know.
Okay. What's your cost savings in audits? Do you have any idea what that costs?
Approximately $4,000 a year.
$4,000 a year. So you're saying we'd be $4,000 a year less for the contribution and a $4,000 a year less for audits?
We don't pay the audit.
I know that comes out of their fund. I understand that, but, so you're, you're saying you could reduce your budget by $4,000?
It's a little bit more difficult to say that it's, you know, we can't always say that it's gonna be that savings for the city, um. But it, 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 uh, it, it's a fairly easy pill to swallow even if there is a bad downturn in the economics of the investments. Um, without getting into great detail, let's say we have a terrible investment year and there's a shortfall. Well, the, the, the analysis each year that is performed by para to determine what the contribution from the city would be would not require the city to make up that entire shortfall. The city would, would need to make up 10% in the following year for what the shortfall was the previous year. The rationale being investments are an up and down cyclical thing. Uh, no one's ever going to, we're not all gonna retire from the department at the same time where all the funds are gonna be necessary. So by increasing it by 10% in the following year, it, it, it makes it a, a much easier adjustment to make, and it allows time for the cyclical nature of investing to, you know, correct itself again.
Good.
And this is a point of reference. I'm abstaining from voting on this, obviously. I might be married to somebody sitting there. But, you know, as, as Scott's been talking about it, I play devil's advocate back and forth a lot. Um, they have done their homework. And one other point I think you failed to mention was that if they don't do this switch, somebody on the department's gotta run that relief association and take care of it. And it's not a job that everybody wants to do. I think it, I think it can be hard to find somebody willing to volunteer for that, so I think that's.
I think I've had the job for, I don't know, 17, 18 years.
What does your investment council do for you that you, like you?
Our investment cost?
Well, don't you, you invest your funds now?
Our, we have money with, uh, Woodbury out of, uh, which bank is it in New Ulm? I forget. And, uh, Neal over at Gaylord at Ameriprise. And, you know, those funds have a load, just like anybody here who's got retirement accounts, but, you know, it's, it's, you know, buried right into the cost of the acquisition of, you know, Fund A or Fund B, you know, probably around, you know, 2% or something like that. And we would avoid that with our participation with para.
I will entertain a motion to approve this.
Would that be, uh, a different para than Gordy and Jenny and everybody, your own?
Right. It, it's the same mother agency overseeing it, but it's our money. It, you know, city money, city employees in Winthrop, their money is commingled with city money from every other city.
Teachers are under para.
Exactly. But in the case of the Winthrop Volunteer Relief Association, that money is in perpetuity set up only for Winthrop Fire Department Relief Association. It cannot be touched by any other entity tapped for any other reason.
Motion made by Dale to approve switching to para.
Second.
Seconded by Lyle. Starting for the discussion. Further discussion. Now proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Talk to the ambulance about it, too?
Ambulance can't, can't do it.
Really?
They can't do a relief association like the fire department.
Really?
Yeah.
Purchase agreement and, uh.
I know, it's, we went through that.
All right, we, we're gonna move on.
Okay, sorry.
The purchase agreement, uh, with Melissa Holmquist, and I'm gonna let, what?
415 North Hennepin.
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we should identify by just the residential address.
By, um, 416 West Third Street. All right, you want to give us an update on that?
So it's, uh, 415 North Hennepin Street. We've been working, uh, with this address for quite a while. Uh, it started off in front of the council as a nuisance hazardous building. Uh, after struggling with that issue, we were able to, uh, come to an agreement in principle that the city would purchase the house for $18,000. Uh, the city council then directed me to, uh, create a purchase agreement and bring that back before the council to get signed. That was relatively in May and June when we finally had. That was relatively in May and June, when we finally had the purchase price agreement and were working on the, on the purchase agreement itself. Uh, I did draft an agreement, um, shortly after the council approved the price, and initially, at that time, uh, the homeowner was working with a legal aid attorney. Uh, they did not, uh, like, uh, the purchase agreement that was proposed. So, I invited them to come back with one of their own, uh, that was acceptable to them. Somewhere along that line, the homeowner switched attorneys, uh, from a legal aid attorney to a pro bono attorney out of New Ulm. Just within the last month, I got a purchase agreement that they were happy with. It keeps the purchase price at $18,000. Originally, however, we were talking about an August 1st possession date of the house. Originally, the, what they proposed was a September 1st possession date, and now, just last week, uh, they switched it to October 1st possession. The reason that they are giving for wanting October 1st is that in the purchase agreement, you'll see that there's $5,000 earnest money that they want released to her right away. The property owner is telling us that she has been looking for new places and that she needs the $5,000 released to her right away to afford a deposit on a different residence. Uh, so, because of the difficulty that the property owner has had with finding that, comes the hail.
Fabulous.
I got tar paper on my robe.
Come on, we just... Oh, um, we maybe go downstairs, or we, um?
That blew earlier.
Yeah, it's done.
All right, it's slowing down already. Where's our spotters, uh, do we have anybody here? You wanna run outside, check this out?
There, meetings can be fun.
All right, um, so...
So, to continue, so that's, uh, that's why they've given the Oc- October 1st date. Um, one thing that I should also just mention as part of this is the purchase agreement does ta- talk about, uh, taking the property subject to taxes and, uh, baht taxes and subject to a mortgage that the EDA already has on it. Originally, when we started talking about this, uh, we believed that there were zero baht taxes on the property. In researching the issue, though, there is actually $1,750 in baht taxes. So, that's an additional price that will have to be paid on top of the purchase price uh, at the time that you transfer title. So, um, obviously, you're probably wanting to know what your options are. I am told that if the council approves this purchase agreement with October 1st, that we have a deal. Now, you could, it is an option, if you think that's too long to wait, you could come back with September 1st, but that could, entering into that negotiation itself could make this draw out longer, because if you direct me to go back and they say no, then either we're coming back in a month to talk about this again, or a special meeting. Uh, additionally, you may ask, well, what if October 1st comes and she isn't out of the house? Well, this is just a purchase agreement, we don't own the house yet, it's not, it's not, we haven't gotten title, so... If negotiation and talking doesn't work, you, the city could be in a situation where you have to ask for legal enforcement of the contract and ask for specific performance for her to sell the house. So, it could drag on more. Hopefully it doesn't, but you need to know the possibilities. You know, and if you do not like proceeding in this fashion, then we can go back to options with the nuisance or hazardous building, but after talking, we felt this may be the easiest, cleanest way to address the issue. So, that's it in a nutshell, and I'll answer any questions.
What's your opinion, what we should do?
My opinion is just accept October 1st, let's go forward and try and get this done.
What if we offered her the earnest money on September 1st? Oh, we already are offering her $5,000 earnest money. Make sure we give that $5,000 and say we want it. Well, if we approve this tonight, when would, she would get the $5,000? Soon as they sign the contract.
And if she signs, yeah.
And if we push it, if we try and adjust to September 1st, and the property owner says, no, and wants to renegotiate, we're gonna come back to this at our September meeting, and it's gonna get pushed off anyway.
Correct.
And what if she comes back on October 1st and wants to go to November 1st?
Well...
That's where we...
That's where we have a signed purchase agreement, and, you know, we'll try and work through any issues, and I'll just be honest, eh, this has been a difficult process because there is challenges, there are challenges with this property, and, and trying to get this done with the property owner. And it's just, it's just one of those situations where it's been long, it's been frustrating, but we're doing what we can.
Yeah, I understand that. We started out August 1st.
Right.
So we're picking...
Now we've tried to go to September, and now she wants October.
Right.
So we're picking up the taxes, too, then?
You, you, yes.
19, 150.
Yes, it's my understanding that she was in tax forfeiture and she worked out a negotiation to pay off those taxes, she did not pay them off in full in order to keep the house off of the auction.
In the interest of keeping things moving, even at the slow pace they are, I move that we, uh, go ahead with the purchase agree, or authorize the purchase agreement.
I see she's got a big semi parked there.
Okay, there's a, there's a motion on the table to go ahead and accept the purchase agreement the way it stands, is there a second? For a second to go ahead and accept this, or do we wanna continue dragging it out?
If, I mean, you don't need to second it, but does anybody have a, an alternate plan? If we don't go with this?
These people have been waiting a long time. Those neighbors.
So, what's the plan for the house after we own it, are we gonna rehab it, or try to sell it, or?
Yes, not rehab, but sell.
Sell it.
We have a motion, we can get a second, we can discuss it, and then you can vote on it up or down. Is there a second?
Well, I'll make a second.
Pete, a second it, is there any further discussion? Yes, now, Pete, what you're asking, uh...
Well, I mean, we plan to sell it, then?
Yes.
Well, we're not gonna demo it?
No.
The city is not gonna demo it?
No.
Great.
And with the shortage of housing, I truly believe that that house is going to sell. It's in a great location. Structures fundamentally sound, what? If we can get her to move. Well, we're gonna have that issue whether we buy it or, or not, so I mean, to me, this would be the easiest and the cleanest way to do. I mean, we just keep pushing it back, but I guess that's what we have to do. Any further discussion?
To answer your point, Bob, yeah, there's a semi in front of there, and that's what she intends to move everything out with.
Is she doing that now?
No, because she, as I stated before, the reason that this is getting pushed back is she says that she needs money to get a deposit for a different place. So, that's, that's why we have this purchase agreement to release the $5,000, and then she can go find a different place. She hasn't moved out yet, because she doesn't have a place to move out to at this point.
Let's get her on.
Okay, if there's no further, uh, discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Um, the trees on 416 West Third Street.
416 West Third Street has three trees in the front of her house that she would like removed, I, there's pictures, I printed off for you. They're pushing up the sidewalk, they're pushing out the curb. She would like them taken down so she could replace the sidewalk, and... Yeah, so, and I guess Lyle asked me to put it on the agenda because he would, and it's hard to take down nice trees, they're very nice trees.
They're very nice trees, and, uh, I had comments that were brought to me that the city's gonna start cutting down good trees, and... So I just wanted us to talk a little bit about it. I think there was a misunderstanding. Some of the people thought, well, they wanted to cut them down because of branches and leaves and all that was going into the homeowners' gutters, and that wasn't the case, it's pushing up the sidewalk liability there, and it's pushing against the curb, too, after I went down and looked at it, too. So, I don't know what our choice is, you know?
It's a safety issue.
Yeah, we have a liability issue if we don't.
It's gotta go.
I think we have to, as much as I hate to have good trees cut down.
Me, too, you all know I hate to cut down trees. I, I agree, I think it's a...
And I think we've got other issues with big trees pushing up sidewalks.
Yeah, we're gonna have a lot of trees coming down, but they're wrecking the sidewalks.
Yeah, they are. Okay, so do we need a motion on this, or can we just get an agreement? What?
We can take them down, right?
Well, under city policy, our policy called for it to be taken down, just because of the concerns, it was just felt to
Right.
just have a discussion.
Yeah, that's, that was my only concern is on, uh, good trees, but that's what we gotta do. All right, next thing, the automated metering survey?
Oh, gee.
Oh, I'm sorry, what did I miss? Oh, I'm sorry, yep, Aaron Hocker, full-time police officer.
Uh, we interviewed four finalists for the full-time police officer position, and Karen would like to offer the position to Aaron Hocker contingent on passing the background and the psyche valve.
And the council approving.
And the council approving, yes.
Is Aaron a guy or a girl?
Girl.
Spelled their own.
I don't know how to spell it.
Any questions?
And it doesn't matter.
No, I just wanna know, Aaron?
If not, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to go ahead and, uh, hire her contingent upon the background check and the psyche valve.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Bob, seconded by Dale. Any further discussion? Any further discussion, if not, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now age, I covered up, gee.
Uh, we've been talking about the automated metering again, and, uh, we met with Cor and Maine to discuss, you know, the automated, either a drive-by system or a AMI system, which is where you could log in and see your usage in, you know, 15-minute increments, I think, is how it records it. Um, we'd like permission to put a survey in the bills online to get some public input on what the public feels they would like to see, um, you know, a lot of people move to town and don't have a clue how to read their meter, they'd have never heard of reading their own meter before. Um, Matthew put some information in there for you on the automated metering, and a copy of the survey that he would like to put in the bills.
Have a cost?
No, I'm waiting to get figures.
I mean, if I, if I had a survey, I'd wanna know what the cost is, the survey.
Well, he's got some options in there, you know, and I guess we've talked about it, Troy, and we have the funds to purchase a system.
I know, but, you know, you were talking about fixing streets. Streets have water means in them. So water is water. So are we gonna lose the water in the ground, or are we gonna lose the water dripping out of the, out of the water meter, or, we don't...
Now we're losing both, so...
But I mean, you got this pot of money, you're either gonna spend it here, or you're gonna spend it there, because it's gonna come out of the people, anyway.
Right, but we have...
But, but here's my point, when's the last time anybody's ever come around to read those water meters?
Well, we have been...
I want the truth.
We have been enforcing the $50 if you don't read them every three months.
I wanna know, don't we have the guys supposed to come around and read those things?
Once a year, yes.
Have day?
They did.
I've never seen them.
Yeah, yeah, they have.
I wanna know the date when they...
I don't know the exact date.
I wanna know the date when they've come around and read those water meters.
Because I was, I was in my kitchen, and I remember thinking, what, somebody's in my yard? And it was just my friend.
I don't believe it, but that's... I wanna know. I mean, if, if they were read, there's a date that somebody read the meters, I wanna know that.
But they need to be read more than once a year.
Well...
And sometimes that's all the time they get read.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying, is, you know...
But now Matthew's been tracking them, and if they go three months without reading, they get charged $50, and we send the guys out to read it.
That's, that I understand, but I, you know, we're talking about we're losing all this water, well, I don't think we do, because nobody ever really knows.
We will now, if we get a meter in system, man.
So, a meter's accuracy goes down every year. Um, I just started in April, but some of the meters Joe had sent in from the old houses are 70 to 85% accurate. We are, I have a list of meters that need to be replaced, we need to replace meters, anyway. My feeling is, why are we just gonna buy a, a meter when we can buy a meter with an automatic reader? The, the town is full of old meters.
What's the cost of a, an unri- uh, uh, the...
A regular meter?
A regular meter versus a, yeah?
What was it, Jenny, for the one with, uh, the pearl, uh?
Was it 130?
Yes, like 130, 150, and from what I know from the other ones, they're both the same, 100 and some dollars.
Now, what's the cost for the cer- for the...
Right there.
For the software and all that stuff, what's the yearly cost?
Yep, what's the monthly vig?
The drive-by system is 2,500 a year. The AMI system is 25,000 a year.
I mean, we, we've talked about this before.
Yeah, we could, uh, get under Hutch's plan.
We can't, we can't.
Why, why are we looking at a meter that the other cities aren't using?
A lot of cities are using the iPearls.
What's Gibbon using?
I don't know what Gibbon's using.
But they, Gibbon is switching to...
Yes.
And what are we looking at for a fee, 'cause Gibbon stuck 10 bucks on her?
Not looking at any fees.
Okay.
We have the money to buy the system.
Then what are we looking at, uh, cutting hours on the utility billing clerk, 'cause if we're billing automatically?
Uh, his job isn't, and, it doesn't consist of entering meter readings.
Just, I'm just saying, that, that position is the utility billing clerk, and they're supposed to be doing utility billing.
Still gonna be billing.
I'm not saying he's not, I'm just asking, where's the time savings? These are questions I have, just questions.
I don't feel that, that we would have to lose a full-time position because of this.
I'm not asking to lose a full-time position, I'm asking, is there gonna be a modification of hours? Is there a time saving?
I don't know, what he spends on entering meter readings is not significant.
Just asking.
But what the time the guys spend running out to read meters is significant, and I think their time is better spent doing other things besides checking meter readings.
I guess I would like to know how much time they're out there spending, 'cause I have no idea.
Well, does he have it in there, I know Matthew and Troy have been tracking the time that they spend.
I, I don't know, I think we're getting lost on the little things, you have to look at the big picture. We're gonna have a much better idea of tracking how much water we're using, we will probably be making more money than what we are now. We have a better understanding of where that water is going, if there is a problem, we know where that problem is. We're talking about somebody walking around checking meters, and we're losing sight of the big picture, and I think we have to keep that in mind.
What was the cost of the last?
500,000.
Time, roughly? We had a proposal.
Yeah, we, we did. That was for the AMI system.
All right, what was the proposal?
What was the...
What was?
Do you remember what the drive-by was?
What I remember is the 25 from our last meeting, from with Kurt.
Yeah, all we're asking for right now is just permission to put in a survey, and get some public input.
When I think about my house, the meters are in the backyard. And it's fine, except for November, December, January, February, when the, the snow can get...
March, April?
Waist-high, and I can, I can go back there, I don't like doing it, and honestly, I used to wait, and I think, oh, well, I'll estimate it, and I'll get it about right when I can get back there. If you had an older person, not that, I, I'm younger than that, they, they'd really have trouble, and you know older people aren't gonna...
We have that problem now.
Yeah, we do.
And we also have the problem of people not putting their real readings on the
Yep.
meter, on the bills.
I, long and hard since anybody walked by my house, I'll, I'll tell you.
Well, next time I'll have him knock on the door.
All right.
Yeah.
But I want that date when you were...
I will find the date. I will find the date, and I will get you the date.
Sit by the window and watch.
Yes.
Be watching.
I got cameras.
I just think, we have a, a large number of seniors in town, and people that it is difficult.
We're not doing this for our benefit, you know? This is to help the city have a more accurate, you know, DNR comes down on us because of water loss. We need to know where our water's going. If we don't know where our water's going, we can't answer to them, you know, if you don't want to do anything.
Then, 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 okay, where's our electricity going?
But if the DNR estimate is that we lost between forty-eight and a hundred and two thousand dollars a year, that's a lot of money.
Yes, it is.
And if, if we can just install these and-
I'll wait for the-
How are they coming up with that estimate? Where do they get the numbers from?
That's based on our pumpage records that we have to certify to them.
Nobody's ever brought the pumpage records to us and said, this is what we're selling, this is what we're pumping.
Well, that's public information.
We've never been given a firm number, we've been given a guess, well, we think they're fifty percent off. Okay.
Well, what, what are you talking about? What's fifty percent off?
Joe said that somewhere up to fifty percent off.
You're talking about water meters, we're talking about two different things.
Right.
You're talking about how much water we're pumping-
How much are we pumping?
And how much-
And how much we're filling? There. We pumping this much, we're billing that much, we get that much loss. Simple.
Well, how about if we-
That's what they're telling.
Is it okay if we go ahead with the survey?
Yeah, yeah.
Get some more information, and then when it comes to the point where we're talking about, you know, actual-
That's all you're asking for.
That's all I'm, yes, that's all I'm asking for.
We diverged a little bit.
Yes.
Let's give her permission to-
I just think we have an antiquated system, all we're doing is buying more old equipment, that's, we, we need to have a better grip, a better understanding of the water that we're using.
He wants Gordy to knock on his door when he reads his meter.
I want him to know when the last time somebody came around and read electric meters and water meters.
Well, they're read at the same time, so.
All right.
Okay. I think we authorize the metering survey.
I'll second.
Motion made, and seconded, made by Julie, seconded by Bob. All those, any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. No opposition?
We got rapped about a meter survey. That's fun.
Okay. Uh, free little library in Spruce Circle, uh, Spruce Circle Park.
Cheryl Melheim would like to put a free little library in Spruce Circle. She'll maintain it, she's going to put a post in, it can be taken out in the winter. Uh, she'll put the books in, she would like to have it there, she thinks it'd get used more than if it was on their property, and I just thought, instead of waiting for a park committee meeting, we could just address it here.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Like to see more of them.
I've seen a little.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion made to go ahead and let her do the free library in Spruce Park. Motion made by Lyle, seconded by Julie. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
We'll be down for abstain, Jenny, thanks.
I got it.
The next thing, infants remembered in silence. Iris, resolution request.
I was asked to see if the council was interested in approving this.
But I don't know what it is.
I, I don't really either, I-
I think they probably-
These are infants that have died?
Yes. Governmental type agency, it, it, it's just signing on to a resolution. Um, where is the actual resolution here?
I think there's a, a day that they want to.
Yeah.
October fifteenth or something.
It was established by President Ronald Reagan, if you didn't catch it from reading the-
I didn't get a thing, because I don't-
Send your pack.
Yeah.
Does it cost us any money?
No.
Not a thing.
It doesn't cost any money.
Well, I'm for it.
It's just a resolution of support.
I'm having those.
Yes.
Let's not argue a half hour on this one.
Okay, and it's up to you people if you want to do this or not. I don't know anything about it, um, other than what I've read.
Well, that's all the information I have too, so, is what they sent me. If you don't want to do anything, that's fine too, so.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same size.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, oil deposit.
Yeah, I've had people request that, is there a place, or could we have a place, like say maybe down by where Gordy's shop is, where people who change their own oil and everything have a barrel out there that people can recycle their oil there?
Does Russ do that?
Russ does it, I know that Dave does that, um, but I don't know if they take other people's oil, they, they take their own.
I think you run into environmental-
Well, I've seen it done in New Ulm, and I've seen it done in other towns, and, uh...
You'd have to have a proper area for storage, and in case it leaks.
You'd have a barrel there, I mean, not a, not a fifty-gallon barrel, but I mean, you'd have to-
We would have to just make sure it's disposed of according to-
There are companies that will collect it for nothing, but you have to have-
I suppose you'd have to have a drip here or there.
You have to have secondary containment, you have to get EPA permit, it's going to be prohibitively expensive. I, I agree, it would be nice, and just to, you know, a couple phone calls in New Ulm to find out, hey, what did you have to go through, might sway you one way or the other.
I think so.
They're a little fussy about used motor oil. What's ironic is, places that sell it are required to take it.
Really?
And, and they are exempt.
Well, I suppose it's people buy it like at Napa, don't want to go down and say, hey, Russ, can they dump my oil?
Well, you know, maybe what we should do, I, I like that idea too, because I have that issue, but I also know somebody that I can bring mine to. Um, maybe we ask the people in town that we know, uh, hey, would you mind if we, do you need this much oil, and would you mind if we put a blurb in the paper saying if you have used ma, oh, maybe we really can-
They take other people's oil, you mean?
They can't legally take other people's oil.
Okay, all right then.
See, and I have one more thing that I have to say. Negotiations, I got this thing, when are we going to start negotiations?
Well, that, I was going to ask after the meeting, when you guys want to meet, so.
Negotiating, what?
I got two meetings we got to set up after the meeting, so.
All right, so what do you want to do with the oil deposit? Do we want to get more information on it, or?
Get some more information. I'll try.
Okay.
Call, call on New Ulm, I bet they'll be happy to tell you.
I'll go down to Ulm and-
That sounds good. I would like to see something like that, too. All right, no unfinished business? Reports, city administrator, EDA?
Let me get there, hold on, hold on, hold on. Okay, I'm working on the budget with Melissa, she's doing great, she's almost done. Um, we're going to have the proposed budget at the meeting for September, and we'll set the truth in taxation that night also. Election training is also going well, we have a great crew of judges, Melissa's also doing great with organizing that. She has taken on a lot this year, and she has handled it all very well. Uh, primary is August fourteenth, uh, that's also the last day filing for office. Seats up this year are Bob, Dale, Lyle, and Kelly. Um, Eighth Street Water Line, did you get ahold of Jirpi's today?
I did, I talked to Bob about it, um, he said next week.
Okay, and now it rained, so.
Yeah, I think we got a lot of rain.
So, um, yeah, we're still trying to get that done. I contacted MinDOT regarding Highway nineteen through town, they still don't have it on their schedule, but they told me they'll drive it again next spring, and I told them I'd put it on my calendar and give them a call next spring to see when and if they were ever going to fix Highway nineteen. Uh, the park committee met with Mary Renner from the Alumni Association regarding the benches they want to put in the park. We also discussed another walking path off the northwest of the path going, going northwest off of that path onto Eighth Street. Oscar got a price from Nizens, and it was around thirteen thousand for that path. Um, you approved the cement in the consent agenda. Mary Renner asked me, um, some of the members of the alumni would like benches in black and red to commemorate Winthrop High School. I'm, you guys are, are you guys okay with that, or would you like to keep a more neutral color in the park?
How would that look in the park?
That's, what?
I don't know, are they black and red on a bench, or black and red, what, what are we talking?
I don't know.
Red, you'd see it.
Black cast iron frame, red, look great.
I think, they're not cast iron, they're-
Classic.
Old wood looking.
Foot.
Mm-hmm, so, she would like a little guidance on that. You don't have to tell me tonight, you can let me know later. Um, I met with Gaylord to discuss the purchase of the new Jetter. Uh, you approved the agreement on the consent agenda, Troy and Ty and Gordy. I'll saw it demoed, and this will be a great improvement over the one that we have. Um, let's see, we discussed the metering, I'm not going there again, so. Electric committee meant to discuss, um, acquiring electric service territory that would be serving the Lafayette lift trucks business along Highway nineteen. I have claw, called McLeod Coop Power for initial discussions, and trying to set up a meeting with them. They were less than cooperative, which is not surprising. Um, I did not get back to Steve with MMUA today to work out a game plan, but it's on my list. Uh, Darren and I met with Heartland to discuss their ongoing construction, they are going to be having construction going for the next two years.